Glendale City Council for June 4th, 2019. May we have roll call?
Council members, Agajanian.
Chris.
Devine.
Here.
Karpetian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here. Will you please read your report?
The agenda of the June 4th, 2019 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, May 30th, 2019, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
We are going to take things out of order this afternoon. We'll start with item three, then to number one, and finally, number two. So let's read three into the record.
Item three is Director of Community Development regarding Central Park Block Final Schematic Design. Three A is a motion approving schematic design and directing staff to proceed with design development.
Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we are here before you this afternoon to provide an update on the Central Park design concepts. Ms. Sanchez is here to give you some opening remarks, and our consultant is also here with us this afternoon to provide more information related to the work that has been done regarding this area. This afternoon, really, Mr. Mayor, will be spent on this entire district, which includes Central Park as well as Arts Ak Passao. And so we wanted to keep the items together to really give you a feel of what the two areas can look like. So with that, we'll go to Ms. Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Najarian and council members. This afternoon, you are being presented with the final schematic master plan for Central Park Block. This final schematic is the culmination of council visioning, numerous meetings with various stakeholders, and of course, community outreach. This legacy project is being created here that's been broken down into two different phases. This will allow for proper coordination with our partners at the Armenian American Museum, as well as to allow for the city to secure the funding to finance these improvements. As part of the city's budget, some funds have already been allocated for these improvements. Yet, as we move forward to the design and ultimately, the construction side, further funds would have to be allocated by council from future funding sources. But today, you're being asked to approve the final schematic, and if approved, staff would bring back a proposal for design development and construction administration. So before we proceed to the next step of the design process, we will hear from Gerto Aquino. Gerto is the CEO of SWA. He has brilliantly condensed the important highlights of the schematic plan, and we'll walk you through the specifics. And council, you have the abridged version in front of you. Gerto?
Honorable Mayor, council members, it's really my honor to present this 100% schematic design to you. And as Darlene pointed out, it really is a culmination, a lot of passion from the community, but also interest in seeing how a Central Park can be the catalyst, could be the transformative open space that really marks this area as a destination and as a Central Park. So let me just get into it. I will also try to condense a lot of this great information into 12 minutes or so. The introduction of this Armenian American Museum does many things. Number one, it creates a destination, but it also creates an opportunity to build on an open space that can start to bring people to a center gathering space, to give them things to do, to activate the streets, to bring people from one place to another. We heard from the community that there were three primary drivers for the Central Park, one being a green space, you know, just a respite, a place to hang out, relax, maybe there's different things to do on that lawn. We heard that they wanted arts and culture. They want to bring some of what's happening in the city already into this central space. And then, of course, community and activation. So whether it's a Saturday at 2:00 PM or a Tuesday at 3:00 PM, there are always things to do, and it's part of a very full calendar of events throughout the year. And so the conclusion really is really the beginning. So how do you then create this gathering space? What does it look like? What shape does it take? And what do we really can look forward to? This diagram, in a very simple way, just kind of pulls it all together. The bright yellow is that kind of central open space, the main figure of this park. And then, of course, connections going east-west and north-south, as well as starting to look at ways in which we can activate spaces around the library, the ARC, and of course, the Armenian American Museum. The illustrative landscape plan, while there's a lot of detail in there, what I'll do with this diagram is just highlight the main aspects of it. So starting with the Central Park in the center, it's about 18,000 square feet or so of flexible open space. To the west of that is a reimagined alleyway with more streetscape and seating and connections to Mona. To the east of the Central Park is more of a plaza space, north of the ARC, but more hardscape, so we can have different kinds of activities there. To the north of the ARC and east of the library is kind of a children's play area and flexible lawn space. To the east of the museum and south of the ARC is kind of a Colorado Street-Paseo promenade connection. And then, of course, all of this is thought of as the new fabric of Glendale. The enlargement of the central open space is very simple. Number one, we wanted to make sure that we thought sensitively about the connection from Mona to Central Park and vice versa. So you'll see there some steps that are still low enough for you to see across the space. If you're standing at Mona looking across, you'll be able to see that lawn, so that that grade change is thought of in a very sensitive way. It could also be almost an amphitheater to the alleyway if you were to have activities there. And then, you'll also see to the east of the main open space is an amphitheater. So not a grand one, but a very community-oriented one. The right size for small events, there will be a small stage. The lawn will be sloped towards the stage, so it really acts and feels like an amphitheater. And then, being sensitive to the presence of the museum, and so what we're trying to do in that central open space is cluster these really large heritage oaks in these three corners that you see there. One cluster next to the library, and then two clusters just to the museum. But it keeps the views open to this really wonderful museum design and also to this surrounding context. And I'm really trying to get through all of this. So if you want me to go faster or slower...
You're going at a good speed.
I can adapt.
We're going good.
Good.
We'll stop you if we need to put the brakes.
Okay, good. Some quick imagery. You know, again, a lot of this imagery was shared with the community. They liked what they saw in these images because it reflected kind of their desires to connect with nature, or to be with other people, or to be healthy and fit. This cross-section, you can see in that bottom right corner, is a cross-section going east-west, looking towards the library. And you can see to the left of that section where I pointed out the grade change that we're creating there, which is necessary because we want to create a really flat and level area for this park. This is really the only area that has that kind of grade change. There's also a grade change south of the museum, but again, we think it's a programmable kind of space where you can have activities, you can sit there and do other things. This section is cut through north-south, and you can see it's cutting through the museum, but also want to point out how the garage is subterranean. And 30 feet of it extends from the face of the museum out. You can kind of see it there. It's 30 feet plaza space, but then it kind of jumps down and it extends another 50 feet underneath the park. And we think this is a good section because it allows for big trees to be planted over structure. It makes it feel like it's real soil, given that kind of depth, and the garage works. And so we spend a lot of time coordinating all of this effort with the museum architects. This is a view. If you were at Mona and you wanted to stroll over to the park, this is your view. So we were taking those existing palms, we added some planting, and you can see how the steps are really kind of an event. The events become kind of a destination in themselves, and then it becomes kind of the foreground to this really wonderful open space.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Is the parking still here on the, in the alley there by the...
Yes.
It is.
There is parking in the alleyway as it is today, and we made some adjustments, which I'll walk you through very shortly. So once you arrive at the top of the steps, this is your view of the Central Park lawn or the main lawn. And you can see how the cluster of oak trees really starts to celebrate the museum in a way. It kind of frames the museum as well as the ARC and the library. So it's very respectful, but also gives you high functionality. I mean, having the shade in those open spaces on those hot days that we have here in Glendale are both welcome and desirable. Okay, view of the amphitheater. So this is our little community amphitheater that slopes down to a very humble stage with a canopy for small performances, and your calendar will dictate what happens there. Your community will dictate a lot of what happens in those spaces. But in the evening, we think that it's all about extending the usability of the park. The more that we can activate the public space, the safer it'll be, the more welcoming it'll be, and the more loved it'll be by this community and beyond. So this is a little depiction of maybe there's a movie night. And the canopy of the pavilion could maybe drop down a nice wide screen, and you could project on it and give reasons for people to be outdoors. So very quickly, test fits. Very much like an interior architect fits furniture within a building, we do the same but with landscape. We want to know how many people can fit in these different spaces. So these diagrams show different scenarios, whether it's 1,400 people watching a concert or a certain amount of people in ice skating rink, which by the way, the ice skating rink we show here is sized between what they currently have at Pershing Square, but a little bit less than Rockefeller Center. So you're kind of right in between there.
Do you do a comparison of maybe Burbank and...
Well, we wanted to kind of, kind of put it out there and give you guys something to think about. So we feel good about the size of this. Sometimes you can have too much space. We think we're right on the money with this one. And then, this area is the children's play area, and of course, this kind of hardscape plaza. You can have different functions in that space. It could be table tennis one week, it could be bocce the next week, it could be chess matches the next week. So we think flexibility is key in that space, as well as the children's play area. Some of the imagery, again, that was shared with the community was all about trying to add color, to create vibrancy in the public realm, to create texture and activation that can change throughout the week. Cross-section through that area, we're showing this big grasshopper in the middle. Right now, there's a big trend to bringing these kind of animated play structures into the play space, going beyond kind of the typical rope and ladders thing, but using animated creatures as a way to connect children with nature. This is a view in that same space. You can see the grasshopper in the background. In the foreground, we want to use those existing trees as a kind of interactive native grassland forest. So a place to understand native plant materials and also maybe a raised boardwalk to take you through there. This is the plaza space right north, just north of the ARC. So again, this is that flex space. It could be anything we want it to be, of course coordinated with ARC. And then, more test fits. So this shows you different scenarios of how that plaza could be programmed. You could have six table tennis tables, you could have six food trucks. Again, it's all left to your imagination, and that's really key in public realm design right now. The ARC building, we did a few things I want to point out. Number one is we are proposing a drop-off, a proper drop-off at the ARC. Right now, that space is a kind of a pergola plaza space, but we think with the way things are being adjusted in the master plan, we think this could be a really, really wonderful addition, and so we've made some adjustments there. We've also included the idea of a cafe on the southwest corner of the ARC building, which you can kind of, I don't know if this is a pointer, oh, the pointer doesn't work. So that cafe is right in the center of the, of the screen there, and then, of course, the connection to Colorado. The Korean Memorial Comfort Station memorial is shown at the northwest corner of the ARC building, where you have those two trees there. And so we've been in discussions with the director of the Korean American Memorial Association of California about that location and its proper kind of layout and positioning, which they're, right at this moment, very happy with where it's located, and we'll have to go into more discussions with them. Imagery, again...
Keep us in the loop on that as well.
Yes, of course, absolutely. And, and actually, we have been keeping everyone in the loop in terms of where that is. And the approach is that where it is in this drawing is very similar to where it is today. And so we're trying to be very careful and subtle.
Yes, Mayor.
We have a letter from Phyllis Kim.
Yes.
Included, where she's applauding the placement and giving approval of where the statue is, and your consideration and where it goes, the location.
Yes. We just wanted to start with a general area where it currently exists, and we can go from there with, with you. Absolutely. I know I'm kind of getting close to the end of time here, so I'm going to just keep rolling. Another section, so this shows the, the proposed cafe building with the ARC on the left side of the screen, and the new museum on the right side, and the Colorado passageway. It's a proposed program that, again, was discussed with ARC and, and other members from the, from the city about activating that part of the master plan. It's important that we try to bring some activity to Colorado and bring Colorado activity into the park, and that became an interesting program for that part of the, of the park. This is a view if you're standing on Colorado Street looking north. This is a view, you can see the museum's on the left side, you can see kind of the cafe conceptually depicted there on the right. And this walkway is meant to be kind of organic and full of trees and grasses and shrubs. It feels very garden-like, a nice kind of threshold into Central Park. And then, diagrams. I'm rounding third base now. I'm almost there. Okay, so the phasing diagram, this was discussed with Darlene and Mark, and the phasing is such that basically, the first phases might be more closely associated with the library and the ARC, as the museum starts to kind of ramp up and starts to integrate with the overall development. So it's conceptual phasing, but this is kind of the current thinking. This is a diagram that we have shared for a while now. Basically, it's telling you that your park today is, on the left side, a certain size, 76,000 square feet, I think that's what you have today. And in the future, if all of this gets approved, you would have 115,000 square feet cumulative, all added up. Quick ADA accessibility diagram, because we need to have universal access throughout the park.
Can you repeat those numbers one more time, please?
Yes. So the, the current open space you have today is about 76,000 square feet. The middle diagram shows what happens once the museum is, lands in that existing space. Your, your open space reduces, actually. So to reclaim that space and add even more, we removed the parking lots, and now you're up to 115,000 square feet.
Basically, including the museum footprint, you're having 115,000 square feet.
No, excluding.
Excluding.
Yes. So only, only area shown in the green color on the diagram is what corresponds to the number, the square footage number. Okay, parking, one of our favorite topics. Today, you have eight, no, sorry, 10. 10 ADA spaces out here today. You have a couple in the alleyway, you have four associated with the library, and you have four associated with ARC.
Mr. Karpetian.
Yes, sir.
I think my, I don't know, maybe my calculation is wrong. Current, the proposed one would be Central Park, Forest Park, and Colorado Park. Am I correct?
Correct.
Those three together is 115,000 square feet.
Correct.
So it does not include the footprint of the museum? That's what I was asking.
That's correct.
Okay, so I thought you said, no, it includes the footprint.
Oh, no, sorry, I, I, maybe I'm not...
Okay. It doesn't include the footprint of the museum. So we're going from 76,000 to 115,000, basically, open space.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's absolutely correct. Okay, so 10 existing ADA...
I guess the point is, I mean, let's, I know, I know the point you're trying to make is you're creating a heck of a lot more open space than currently exists.
Absolutely.
Even if you take into account the site lost by the museum's footprint.
I said the same thing, was in my...
I mean, that, no, that's your emphasis. I mean, that's, that's what you're saying, and, and it's a lot more green space than currently exists today.
Yes, and we are all together on this one.
Which is what we asked for. We demanded that.
That's right.
And we, we promised the public that we were going to give them more.
We promised and we delivered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. And going back to the parking, because I want to respect the time that I have here in front of you. So you have 10 today. In, in this proposal, we have 12. So we're adding two additional spaces if I add that up correctly, six, 11, 12, right. And I, I think it's a better configuration. For the library, if you look back, right, there's the four spaces the library currently has, and the access to front door or rear door, if you will. In the new configuration, we still have four, and they are to the, they moved to the alleyway. The two spaces you currently have in the alleyway remain there. The spaces around the ARC add two more, and they're distributed probably a little better in terms of access to the front door. So we're adding two additional spaces. So that, that works pretty well. Grading-wise, we have, we do have contours and grade change we need to accommodate, but it's part of the design, and it works with universal access, and it creates a wonderful shaping of the land. So that works. And finally, back to the illustrative plan, I just want to say to, to conclude, this really was the work of the community. It's the community's plan. We worked really hard with the architects, the ARC, the library, and any other stakeholders that had interest in this project. We feel very strongly that at this stage, it really is kind of a celebratory moment for everyone, and we're happy to answer any questions and to maybe even describe anything in more detail, if you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a card from the public, so let's go to Shont Sahakian, and then we'll come back to council for any follow-ups and comments.
Okay, thank you.
Shont Sahakian.
Aaron Najarian, council member, city staff. Name is Shont Sahakian, Executive Director of the Armenian American Museum. And I'm also joined here by our Executive Chairman Beric Karpetian, as well as our Architect Aram Alajajan of Alajajan Marcosi Architects. And here to just express our appreciation of the cities, the councils, the staff, and the entire community's support of the Armenian American Museum. We are excited about your vision for the Central Park Block project, and we also want to express that we are grateful and very much appreciative of the overall direction of the schematic design that's presented by SWA Group. We believe that they have done a good job of incorporating the feedback, both from the museum as well as the community, and believe that what they are proposing will provide harmony where both the museum and the park will benefit and will create lots of opportunities for both the museum and city to collaborate on many projects, as well as indoor and outdoor programming in the space that has been presented. And we are working with our team of consultants, design team consultants, as well as engineers and architects, as we prepare our plans to submit to the city. And I think we recognize the importance at this point for both teams to come together and coordinate our efforts, as we are mutually dependent on each other to make sure projects are implemented successfully, each project respectfully. And so we, we welcome the opportunity to meet jointly and work together, and we look forward to working with the city of Glendale, the council and staff to successfully achieve our collective vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let me open it up to comments or questions from the council. Ms. Devine?
Sure. I'll, I'll start. That's music to my ears, Shont Sahakian, that, that you all approve of this concept and the, the effort that you've put forward to collaborate with, with them and with us, the city. At first glance, you know, I loved it. I think it's fantastic. I love the opportunities that are there. Love the idea of more green space, because I know that, as the mayor has said, we, there was an outcry of concerning the lack of green space and that we were taking away that park. And in reality, we are not doing that. We are making it larger. I have a couple of questions. First of all, and this is a budget question, that dropdown screen in the, at the amphitheater, is that included in the budget?
Yes, yes, it is.
Is it?
It is. Everything I presented to you is in the estimated construction budget.
Okay, because I want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not, you know, later on, it's going to be, oh, no, this is going to be another $100,000 for this, or, so that, that's all included. I had a concern about the, the fitness area, and you have it tucked away behind the library and in the alley and across. And I don't remember, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember that a lot of people asked for a fitness area in this park, and I don't know how appropriate it is. We have the ARC with their recreational, their fitness rooms there. Of course, you know, we get younger people that want to go to the park, but someone said, you know, who wants to go down there and see a shirtless guy, you know, pumping iron or something? So I'm just wondering if, if maybe, you know, you mentioned bocce ball, if that wouldn't be a great place for a, an, an activity like that for our residents? What are your thoughts on that, Annie?
There are probably a number of ways we can answer this, and Darlene seems like she wants to also. I would say that part of the master planning process was to try to activate all areas. We see this as really a campus of open space, and that area currently is underutilized. And so when the ideas were starting to surface about, well, we want to be outdoors, we want to be healthy, you know, how about some outdoor equipment for exercise? I think your Parks and Rec Department said there were resources to allocate towards that kind of fitness equipment. So we conceptually thought, well, why don't we take what is now an underutilized space and activate it? And, and so conceptually, we relocated it there. But I, I agree, I think it's open to flexibility. It could be bocce, it could be a combination of both. We could move any of that kind of program around.
Okay, and you met, well, you mentioned in the, the area, what are you calling it? Number eight, I think it is, the not-nitto splash pad, seven, tree grove with seating? This, this active area on the site, 13, maybe it is? No, the event plaza.
Yes.
Event plaza. You said that maybe we could use that for activities like bocce ball or something. I, I'm just trying to think of ways. I know that we have a lot of seniors that hang out down there at the ARC, and they love our parks. And I, I'm just trying to find ways to put more activities or available space for them to go and just enjoy. Because, you know, the younger crowd is usually working, but it's, it's our, it's our seniors that really love these spaces and enjoy them all week long.
I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I think maybe just east of the pavilion structure, you can place a few bocce courts in there underneath the shade trees. I think it's a perfect place for that.
Then they could just come out of the ARC, or, you know, those that live in the apartments and, you know, on the weekends.
Right, exactly.
Okay, the cafeteria, and you've discussed this with the Armenian American Museum, that this cafeteria isn't going to be of, be an issue with them. I mean, I, I thought that they had food, a food court or something planned in the museum.
Thank you, Mayor. Great, uh, thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman Devine. Yes, this is something we briefly discussed. This is still at the end of the schematic design, but although physical coordination of these efforts are important, so are the other practical coordinations. So what is the function of this cafe, especially compared to what? We intend for this to be complimentary, and this will be more of a public amenity. So we would make sure that we coordinate with the museum on that.
Okay, because I, I do like the idea. I think it's a good idea. Let's see, parking, you went over. Oh, signage for the pavilion, the, would you be providing some sort of a artistic, I guess, way of presenting a schedule or what is coming and that sort of? I, I didn't see anything mentioned in the plans about signage.
We have, we have provided a budget for wayfinding and signage to cover perhaps an event's calendar that could be located centrally, just off the Central Park, so it's visible, and people could remember to go check it out to see what's coming up.
Okay, so you've thought of that.
Yes.
You've thought of everything, haven't you? Fantastic design, I'm just thrilled. So we've, as I say, we heard a bit, something from the Korean Association that they, they appreciate that. I think, I think that's it. I think that's it for me. Thank you. Very nice job.
Mr. Karpetian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions regarding the, the timing. You mentioned that we can basically simultaneously start when the museum starts and basically construct the east and west portion of the Central Library and north and east portion of the ARC. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, and the reason why we did that is depending on the schedule of the museum, we could get... we could get started tomorrow on the areas you just described as to not impede development of the park.
No, I understand, because for, for this kind of a construction, they will need some staging area so they can use that, the open lawn area that we have right now, part of the staging, so they won't block the traffic or anything. That would be a, a good teamwork between all of us. Well, for the people who are criticizing this, this project, this is not just another park. Look at the difference. I know there's a difference in square footage, but look at the programs that we have in this new design of the Central Park, the open lawn, I can go on and on, all of the, all of the, all of the amenities that we're including in this design. It's a, it's a great, great improvement for the, for this entire area. I was kind of concerned about the stage being right in the middle, but when I looked at the, the renderings, eye level renderings, it's a see-through stage, it's not blocked in the back. So I could see that you can walk in there and see through it. So it's not like you come in and the stage is blocking the other side, which is the Louise side of the thing. And I think one other thing we need to consider is how do we program that area when it's not being used as a stage? So.
Right. That's correct. We, we want to make sure that when there are no events happening, it feels like maybe it's part of a living room. We could, we could put furniture on it, it could be a place to, to hang out and just being, enjoy being outdoors.
Sure. And the parking, this may be a, a question for, for staff. In our staff report says general public is, general public parking is provided by the museum's parking structure. I wanted to know how many parkings we have currently, what is it that we're expecting for, for the museum to provide, and how are we going to share it? Is going to be a shared parking or do I have to build addition to that? And so on and so forth.
Thank you, Member, it's Councilmember Karpetian. The intention with that language is not to use the museum parking garage for any of the public. The museum parking garage is for museum patrons. Any of the public parking would be in the city-owned garage, which is a corner from this park on Louise, or we've had discussions with other options as well. But at this point, the plan would not be to use any of the museum parking for the park.
Okay, so do we know how many park, parking spaces do we have currently?
We, we have that diagram. I don't have it here in this presentation, but we can provide that information to you. We did a diagram that has the total number of existing spaces today.
Right.
Yes, we have that diagram.
I'd like to have that, I think we can maybe take a look at it before we finish today.
Okay.
I know we're providing some handicap parking, accessible parking, but I want to know what's the currently, what we have existing number of parkings.
Okay.
But again, my staff report says, what page am I on?
Page four.
Page four. It says, general public parking is provided by the museum's parking structure and existing public parkings. So that language is there. If that's what you're expecting from them, I think that language has to come out. And if we do, then it's a different story.
Sure. I mean, at the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Karpetian, once the parking structure for the Armenian American Museum is built, it doesn't preclude the public to park in that parking structure and pay. I, I believe that that will be part of the, the museum's structure itself and the ability for the public to have access to that parking structure will be there for a fee, as it would be for the community if they wanted to park across the street in the Maryland garages. And as you know, we have free parking for 90 minutes and after that, there's a fee associated with that. And so that was our intention in terms of the language, but understand what you're referring to.
Because we're, currently, Central Park is very, it's a passive park. We're making it very attractive. By the way, this is a great design. I really like this design and I want to congratulate you and the staff, they worked really hard on, on this. This is, this is great. But we're, we're going to attract a lot more people. And the standing concert was, what, 1,100, 1,200 people?
Right.
If you have a concert like that and a huge wave of people show up at the same time, we need to be able to accommodate the parking as well. One last question is, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. On page 11, where you showed item 12, which is the elevator, that gray area, which is the walking area in front of the museum?
So the, the elevator is on that northwest corner of the museum, which takes you down to all the parking levels. And that plaza is 30 feet from the face of the museum out.
So this is the 30 feet that we were, that we voted on?
Yes.
So it's, it's showing as a walkway right now, but from the edge of the grass to the building is 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sinanian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to share my colleagues' sentiments on this project and what a contrast compared to this warm space that sort of, that's contained in this project in the, in the, in the plan versus the relatively desolate look that the Central Park has right now. Going to have a museum, going to have all this green space, which as everyone mentioned, and I'll mention again, is actually more open space than we currently have. And the park's going to get activated. I, I mean, I really like the effort that you've put into it. I like the fact that the museum is, I mean, it's so nice, the museum obviously likes it, the museum committee likes it. Staff has done a great job working with you on this. The end product's going to be something that not only can all of us be proud of, but also I think our residents are going to be very happy with. In terms of the outside gym, I mean, there may be the occasional guy with the shirtless guy pumping iron, but most likely, it's going to be another elderly, elderly person who, instead of doing exercises indoors, is going to do it outdoors. So I don't think that's a, that's a bad component to the project, so I, I welcome it. I think it's a good idea. Otherwise, you know, keep going. This is great. I'm all for it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Agajanian?
I just want to say thank you for what you have done.
Thank you.
And I'll be brief also. I agree with all of my colleagues' comments, but I very much like the, if I can use the word articulation in the park with the different angles and materials and the boardwalk through the forest lawn, what do you call it? The library lawn and the forest boardwalk. I really think that's cool and it really creates so many more opportunities at recreation and peace and quiet than we currently have. So it's a great design. I'm very happy with it. And I, I think, I haven't heard a cross word yet from the council, which is pretty unique. Usually we find something to complain about, but it's, it's very good. I'm very glad and happy at the work S W A has done here and you yourself.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I just, I just wanted to clarify. My colleague in Community Services and Parks is working with the county on a grant for that exercise station. And from what I've heard here, keep the exercise station, he'll continue to work with the county. If you have a change of mind, let us know and, and then we'll terminate that. But I know Onik was, was looking for some direction there.
But I think it needs to be in the same high-quality design and features that, that we're seeing throughout the park. I just don't want you to plop down a, you know, a horizontal bar or a chin-up bar or something like that.
They have a lot of trees. You have a lot of trees around there, don't you? So that's, yeah.
We have lots of trees.
It's perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Karpetian?
Thank you. I was told by staff via text that, that number is on page 72, they have 70, 70 parking spaces, total loss of 70, 70 parking spaces that is currently on the. And also, since we talked about trees, we see so many mature trees on these renderings. So when we develop this site, I think we need to, this is an expensive project, it's like 18, 19 million dollars. So it deserves oversized mature trees. I know they're expensive, but I think that's, that's the part that we need to invest some of our money, like the ones that they put in Americana.
Correct.
Some of them, not all of them, they're very expensive, I understand that.
Yes.
But some of these, these areas that you want to create that shade area, by the time these little 24-inch box trees get to be a good shade area tree, it's, it's going to take a very long time. So I think that's something that we need to, to look into, especially when it shows on your, on your plan, it looks really nice, so.
And, and we, we have allocated funds to bring mature trees into this project. So that, that's included in the 18 million. I would also say that there are a couple of existing oak trees on the property now that we intend to relocate into that central lawn space.
Okay. I'm sure the trees are the type that the roots are not going to come out, like some of them that we have here and there, so it won't be a trip hazard.
Correct. Right, all of these trees will be kind of deep root. Unlike the ficus trees, ficus trees tend to want to go up. These will be down.
Okay. Would someone like to make the motion at 3A?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Hey, I'll let the city clerk figure that one out.
I'll take it. No, it was me.
And second was?
It was Mr. Councilmember Sinanian.
You were second.
Okay. That's why I let you figure it out.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item one.
Item one is Director of Community Development regarding Arts and Entertainment District's Stakeholder Outreach and Preliminary Design Updates. One is Motion to Report and File the Update for the Reimagination of the Arts and Entertainment District on Artsakh Avenue and Nearby Alley.
Ms. Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, continuing on with our conversation regarding this area, we're going to move a little north and across the street from downtown Central Library onto Artsakh Avenue and talk a little bit about the Glendale Arts and Entertainment District, a vision that the City Council put forward some years ago, and we're happy to bring some information back to you. So with that, we'll go to Ms. Hiramoto.
Great, well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is very clear that this is an exciting time for this part of the city and we...
Your microphone down.
Not used to this side of the podium. When we started on this project, we boasted that this would be a distinct yet complementary experience to what's on brand. It's very clear after listening to the update on Central Park Block that this will also be a very clear yet complementary design to the Central Park Block. So with your design cap still on, we, we will embark on a very brief conversation today. This is a continuation of the conversation that we've had recently on the reimagination of our efforts with the Artsakh, Arts and Entertainment District. Since we last saw you in March, we have, we took your comments, especially regarding those big design moves, and some of those are related to what we've also heard with the Central Park Block. And I ask that as you look to the Arts and Entertainment District, that, that we look at some of the efforts that we've taken with the Central Park Block and realize that we can continue some of those down the Arts and Entertainment District. So we've taken your comments, we continued our stakeholder outreach, including a presentation to the Arts and Culture Commission, meetings with stakeholders, which included property owners and businesses. And we also hosted an Activate, Activate Artsakh Community Workshop. It was there that we were able to include some of the ideas that you presented as well. I know that Councilmember Devine was, was there to enjoy some of the festivities. We had more than 250 community members out there. We were able to really channel some of those questions. Do we want this to be a place for kids? Do we want this to be a, a place for adults? Do we want this to be a place where we're focused on artist colonies? And we were able to have some programming related to that. And these are some photos that were taken from the event. Through those efforts, we were able to, which is a surprise, but really get consensus for this project. We continue to hear great support for the Arts and Entertainment District. Folks are, are hungry for this type of activity within the city and they support your vision for this. And this was something that we look to continue to refine and that is why Studio 111 is here today. The purpose of today's meeting is to get council approval on two design schemes. We are not asking you to even make a decision on whether one design scheme is better than the other, but ultimately to get your approval so that we can move forward with the cost estimation, with the traffic studies and engineer studies. We are at the very early stages of this. You just witnessed the conclusion of what stakeholder outreach and council member participation will look like through the Central Park Block design. Remember that we are still very early on. And if there's something about these preliminary designs that you're not comfortable with, we can adjust that now so that we can move forward with the cost estimation. With that, I would like to turn it over to our Studio 111 team. We have Alan Poolman, he's the principal of Studio 111. And later, we'll, we'll hear from Shannon Heffernan, the Urban Design Director. And I did want to mention, we also have Bradley Calvert, Assistant Director, and he's been instrumental on the planning side, and Mark Berry as well. Alan?
Honorable Mayor and council members, it's great to be back. This is, that was a hard act to follow. I'll do the best. We are at the very conceptual stages here. Just want to start with just some of the key takeaways from some of our outreach was that, as Jennifer Hiramoto said, strong support for Artsakh as the, as the center of the Arts and Entertainment District, that we, consensus has kind of emerged that this area should be really more focused on adult-oriented and artist-focused, and I think that's a great compliment to what we just saw with the Central Park plans. We heard from you, the council, that you preferred a tactical incremental approach that built upon some of the great stuff that's already on the street. And we heard a real strong desire from stakeholders and the community to make this as pedestrian as possible. One of the elements that we did when we had that community outreach meeting, Activate Artsakh, was we gave the community some different elements to prioritize. And you could see some of the things that they chose here, shade elements and, and furnishings and lighting, some of the things that you, you recognize and, and agree with, I think. We did not give them a chance to say, you know, make it a fully pedestrianized street with no car traffic at all. I think if we did, that may have actually risen up in terms of its priority for the community. So with that, I'm going to show two conceptual options today to share with you. The first one, we're calling the one-way shared street option. This is the existing conditions. You could find this on page, I think, 11?
11.
Yeah, 11. Just to show the orienta, just to give you orientation, north is to the right. So we have Wilson on the right, Broadway in the center, and then Harvard on the left of the page. And you can see the existing street configuration, which features one-way traffic in each direction, sometimes more with turn lanes, very narrow sidewalks. And we've shown in gray the area that's the current pilot project. So the first option, like I said, we're calling it the one-way shared street option. And this is existing, this is what that option looks like. And I'm going to just talk about some of the key points of that. The one-way street option was the basis of design recommended by prior studies by the city staff. And what it really involves is vacating one lane of traffic and turning that area into pedestrian and people space. Now, one of the key issues with that scheme is where do you, which, what do you vacate? Do you vacate the east side? Do you vacate the west side? Do you put the traffic lane down the middle and expand the sidewalks on both sides? Those are options that we studied. We found out that putting the traffic in, in the center would involve a lot of reconstruct, a lot of loss of landscape, a lot of reconstruction of infrastructure. And so we didn't really study that one in too much detail. But what we did do is we studied and, and had a lot of stakeholder input and out consultations that we could expand sidewalks on both sides of the street by slightly weaving the street as it made its way through this two-block stretch. And that would take advantage of existing storefront business opportunities on both sides of the street. And that's what you see here. And that's why the road kind of, kind of curves its way through the, the plan in this particular option. This curved road is sometimes called a chicane. It's a best-practice method approved for traffic calming. It's been demonstrated to slow traffic and create a pedestrian-first environment. This, this method has been used in a lot of city centers, and Seattle and San Francisco Downtown have several of them. And it's really similar to some of the curves found along Honolulu Avenue in the Montrose District, has a very similar kind of feel to that. So that's the basic overview of the option. And then just to go, I think if you turn your page... your page, you'll see the whole street in a little bit more detail. The plan shows that towards Har, Wilson, the traffic lane is on the west side of the street, and then it transitions somewhere mid-block to the east side of the street. What this allows us to do is expand sidewalks in front of what we hope is a revitalized five-star cinema building, and we've had discussions with some of the representatives of that property. It also allows us to expand the sidewalk in front of the garage spaces that the city controls, as well as the King Taco on the corner of, let's see, where are we here?
Broadway.
Oh, yeah, on Broadway and Artsakh. And then if we go to the next side of the street, oh, before I jump into that, I want to make a point here. I think it's really important that we still have the ability to have a larger vent for the street that can go from building to building. And so that's what this diagram shows, you don't actually have it in your plan. But what this shows is that by using temporary bollards and good signage that shows it's not a through street in these locations, we can take that whole area where the existing plaza is, the pilot project, and really turn it into a larger event space and do that on an occasional basis.
Ms. Carpetian?
So somewhat like the option that you have on page 21.
Let me go.
Basically what we have today?
Yes.
Between the two entrances or exits of the
Exactly.
Parking garages.
Exactly.
We have the entire thing closed off right now.
Exactly. So what this does is allows total closure of the street, very similar to what you have now, on an occasional basis. The thing about this is that garage access would be maintained, as well as the valet function for Rafi's Place. So we wanted to make sure that those things didn't get too much imputed.
Ms. Devine?
So it just gives us more flexibility in the use of the street.
Yes, exactly, and we think that's a really good thing. I think another thing about the scheme that we want to talk about is the spaces that we've created are kind of manageably scaled, that could be activated by adjacent businesses and as well be used for events. It is important that this scheme does maintain the garage access and the actual functioning of that garage doesn't have to change at all. We've also in the scheme located intermittent loading and service spaces to help facilitate the support of the businesses. As I said, Rafi's Place valet option is still accommodated. The S Street will increase pedestrian safety and comfort by slowing cars, and it'll, but you know, it will also allow during the week through movement, which actually could be really helpful for the businesses. But what it does eliminate is that awkward U-turn situation that a lot of cars are facing now and loading trucks are facing now. So it really does address that particular issue. Moving to the south block, so on this block, the street does kind of transition as it goes towards the marketplace. We've actually provided in this scheme some short-term angled parking, and that might help some of those vacant retail stores in the elevator building. Access to the garages and loading for the marketplace is maintained. Possibility of activating the garage with retail is shown too, and that's what that pink bar in the garage is, and it will be very similar to the retail that you have in the north block exchange garage. The plan suggests locations for iconic identity signage and gateways that we can discuss in some of the future slides. And we want to give some visualizations of what this particular scheme could be like. Again, not as developed as what you've seen, but maybe we could use some imagination. This is the existing north block, you could see the garage, city garage on the left, and this is what it would look like with the expanded sidewalk in front of the city garage. We think that that sidewalk could be designed with the help of an artist to be an artist's palette. Shade structure over the sidewalk can also be part of a rotating art component. And then moving to the south block, this is looking towards the library, Home Goods on the right and the existing garage on the left, and a visualization showing an expanded people zone, which allows for the installation of playful furnishings and landscape elements, a large shade structure. There are also many opportunities to include art on walls and within the expanded plaza space. The view also shows in this particular case on the left, the possibility of activating the garage first floor with storefronts or other usable spaces. So that's the one-way, one-way street option, and I think I could move on to the next option one.
Yes.
Okay. We're calling this one the plaza option. And the plaza option is really, I think builds on the pilot project. There was a lot of success. When we had that Activate Artsakh event, it was really great to be in that space. Now, we can do something similar to that in even the one-way street option, as we mentioned, but we wanted to really look at the option which took the, those temporary tests in the pilot project and made them more permanent. So our concept here shows actually two plazas, one on the north side and one on the south side activated, and each having potentially its own character. This option relies, will rely on programming such as art and events to be successful. The south block has the potential to build on the activity of the Central Library and the Central Park as well, so that is an interesting tie into what we just saw. So to focus in on the north block on, I think, page 21, shows the plaza taking up the location of the existing current pilot project. We also show an opportunity to tighten the intersections at Wilson and Broadway to give more pedestrian space to existing tenants and businesses. This option would maintain that existing U-turn configuration, which is slightly awkward, and I think circulation issues would have to be addressed through better vehicular signage that make it clear that this is no longer a through street. On the south block, we're showing that this area could be programmed for events and kiosks and maybe be a little less formal than the northern block. There's an opportunity as well here to increase sidewalk space in front of some of the storefronts and make them more viable. The U-turn and servicing issues here will be a bit of a challenge with this particular scheme, but can be addressed through signage, and we do need to do further study for that. It also requires the reconfiguration of the existing garage entries, because one is in-only and one is out-only, and this scheme kind of requires that they change and be in-out. These are all very conceptual early ideas, so they have to be vetted with city staff and the traffic consultant. I want to show some visualizations of this plaza, so this is the existing pilot zone with the garage on the right, and what it could look like with some more permanent improvements. The street could act as a canvas. We take away that curb that's in the middle of the plaza, so it's a much better functioning plaza. We can install sculpture, rotating art, more permanent overhead elements, as well as signage. And then on the south block, looking to the north with the garage on the right, and this is what that plaza could look like, playful street furnishings, maybe some activation of the garage, creative signage or wayfinding. It's a great space for a potential farmer's market or other kind of event. And then some infrastructure to really create a great overhead canopy that could be infrastructure for art, rotating art elements. So those are the two schemes. That's not the only thing we're looking at, we're also looking at other elements of the Artsakh zone. Those include improvements to the alley to create a more engaging space and attract private investment to the alley, landscaping, lighting, and signage enhancements as well, and identity signage and tenant signage that really will give more identity for this particular area. And then we're also developing a preliminary arts program in conjunction with the Arts Commission, Arts and Cultural Commission, to tie art into whatever designs we end up I'll show you a couple of things that we're working on in terms of some of those additional elements. So this is a little aerial view looking north with Broadway and Artsakh, and this is the existing condition. What we're proposing here is a gateway sign. This wouldn't be the design of the sign by any means, but just showing the location of the sign. We really think this is a great location to give identity to this particular district. We're also thinking about some improvements to the intersection, potentially raising it to sidewalk level, creative crosswalks or other kind of art elements that would prioritize pedestrians. It's a little bit of a hard intersection to cross, and we think we can make some strong improvements there. And then the existing alley. The alley, it could be a great space in the downtown. It gets serviced up until 10:00 AM, and then after that, it just sits pretty unused. We think that you can imagine if we could activate some of the storefronts, we actually found a tremendous amount of support from the stakeholders about doing that, adding additional lighting, signage, and art components. This could be a really very, very special space within the city. So Shannon Heffernan, our Urban Design Director, is going to talk about next steps, but just I wanted to summarize our design options. I want to make clear, these are not standalone options, they could be combined, they can be phased, they implement it over time, they build upon the structure of the street right now, which is actually quite good. But we do feel strongly that some of the ideas that we're showing are bold and yet actionable, you know, economically efficient. They'll further make Artsakh Avenue an interesting and vibrant heart to this Arts and Entertainment District. They will complement what you're, the beautiful work you're going to do at Central Park and contribute to the continued success of downtown Glendale.
Yeah, to the right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I wanted to present the next steps for this project. Right now, we are in the conceptual phase, so phase one, and our, what we are requesting from council today is a recommendation on the two schemes that our consultant team should further explore. From this recommendation, we will be engaging our traffic consultant to analyze each of the options, to identify any possible traffic or circulation issues, if any. The two options that were presented to you today, our traffic consultant actually did provide some preliminary analysis of the options. And we would also like to engage our cost estimator consultant to provide a rough order of magnitude cost, so when we do go back to council in August, we could present that information to you. We also, since we last presented to you in March, we met with the Arts and Culture Commission and shared a presentation that was shared with you in March. We would like to circle back and present to the Arts and Culture Commission in July to discuss the arts and programming ideas that were presented to you today. And then lastly, we will be working with city staff over the next two months to refine each of the design concepts, as well as working with our traffic consultant and our cost estimator consultant, and we would like to follow up and present to you in late summer of 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. So we get to discuss primarily which one of those configurations we're favoring, as well as some of the other details that you talked about, correct? That's what we're interested in hearing at this point.
Mr. Mayor, we would love to hear your feedback on the preliminary designs, but it's not necessary to choose one or the other.
Okay, all right.
Our primary interest is in making sure that of these two designs, it at least captures what your interest is, so that we can then better investigate the range of magnitude and the traffic engineer's studies. But we would love to hear your comments upfront, so that we do know
Okay, good.
If we're going down the right direction.
Okay, Mr. Sinayan?
Thank you. If I may. So thank you for preparing this report for us. I, my primary comment, again, I, you know, I don't think we need to micromanage this at this point, because we're still talking about concepts. But in terms of the pedestrianization of the street, which is, I think, a pivotal point of this project, I, I saw, you know, I'm looking at two versions, right? One is the plaza version and the other is the one-way traffic version. I think the plaza version is a new, relatively new concept that you're introducing now.
I think
Building on the existing
Yes.
Passeo that we have. The one-way concept, yeah, I'll speak for myself, I probably am speaking for others too, but if we had our way, we'd shut down the whole street. But the realities are the realities, the parking entrances and so forth, so on and so forth. But considering that, and I'm not hung up on this, I understand that, again, traffic flow issues may be dictating as to how we end up doing this, but which side of the street we choose to pedestrianize and which side we keep us in terms of traffic, I, you've chosen, well, let's go back to that slide. It's the, it's the western side of the street that you've chosen to pedestrianize or the eastern?
If you turn to page 12 and 13.
13, yeah. Okay, there it is.
We
So it's the others.
We saw advantages to both sides, and so what the street does is it weaves a little bit through.
Right.
And that's what I was mentioning about this, not only does the weaving actually take advantage of certain opportunities to expand sidewalk
Right.
Where we think it makes sense, it also will slow traffic and make it a much more pedestrian priority street, and I was mentioning, similar to Honolulu Avenue in Montrose, where that weaving does slow traffic and creates a much more interesting pathway. So what we did is we looked at all of the different storefronts and figured out, and decided where actually expanding the sidewalk actually could actually benefit the business, which is one of the goals of the project, as well as have the business activate that particular area. And so that's why we are showing that weaving of the street.
Right, and also considering that the alleys are on the western, the alleys that we're sort of excited about and think of
Yes.
Including this project also on the west side
Mm-hmm.
Of the street, and also the two passeos that connect Brand to Artsakh are also on the west side. I think it makes sense to have that continuity of sort of pedestrian flow of people, I don't know. Well, I'm basically agreeing with this, that's, I'm not, you know, I'm not criticizing, I'm saying those are arguments that
Mm-hmm.
Support this version of it, although, again, traffic flow is traffic flow, I'm sure that's going to be something that's very important and is going to probably have a determinative role on how we end up doing it. I'm not, I'm not too crazy about the plaza concepts, I love the plaza, I proposed this, the existing, the existing passeo, or whatever we call it now. So I, you know, for me, it was a first step towards expanding the whole thing for two blocks, but again, the garages are the garages. But having these segmented to plazas, I know that it's, if that's the only thing that we can do, that's better than having nothing. But if we can have the version where we're actually blocking off one entire side of the street to car traffic, that would be my choice. And the rest of it, you know, the aesthetics, you know, what you do overhead, and, you know, that's still in the future, right? You've gotten a lot of feedback from council, we have, we all have ideas, I think we're still very excited about this project. It is going to give our downtown more depth, and it's going to make it more pedestrian, more open space, it's just all things to be happy about, and hopefully we have the funding for all this. It's all from me. Thank you.
Mr. Zagajanian?
If you look at page 13, if you have, I'm concerned with, you're narrowing the Wilson Street, I guess, Wilson Avenue or Street, Street. You're narrowing when you're, you want to enter from Wilson to Artsakh, like you're turning a right turn, you made it narrower, I mean, the street, Wilson is narrow. Already that portion between Artsakh and Brand, the traffic is so heavy that sometimes from Wilson they go and block the Brand's traffic. So narrowing it, I mean, to me, I think will cause more problem on Brand. So I don't know why we are doing that, but I maybe have a reason, so I want you to look into it if, yes, please.
No, I agree, it's a, it's a challenge and intersection, you know, that sidewalk in front of Pierre Garden is just a very tight sidewalk, and we're trying to create that connection to the Lemley's Theater and the new Chinese restaurant. But we really do need to study that intersection, and there's a very good chance that that particular element of the plan may not make it into any final plan. It's, we're right now sort of a little bit of a wish list, and to see if we can tighten the lanes, but we agree that that, we'll have to study that further.
Wilson is narrow and it's affecting Brand, so that's why I thought I'm worried about. I like both, the ideas of whether to be Artsakh, be one-way street going through, and also the plaza idea, I like both, but I have the plaza idea, I like both, but I have concerns with one-way street. If we want this to be an area that people will come with little kids, so they will run, I mean, I don't know if you can keep them in their place. You're not going to put any structure to block, to walk from the sidewalk to that one-way street, do we?
Well, if you look, let me see if I could show you the rendering, and I'll get you the page number in a second. Actually, we could, if you look at page 15.
15?
Yes. So, let me just go back here. I think the way we design this sidewalk extension, you see on page 15, if we actually, in this particular case, we're showing expanded sidewalk, we're showing some planting, we're using the existing palms on the right, and a low wall to actually enclose the space. And it's still open, so we don't want to feel like there's a wall there, but there is a barrier for kids to, or anyone else actually just walk into the street in that particular location. So there are ways of designing it, so it's a little bit more disconnected from the traffic.
Okay. That's a great idea, of course, but still, there are openings toward that one-way street, so that concerns me. I like both of them, and I, on the pictures, a one-way street will look more enticing than to a plaza. But I mean, in practicality, maybe you want to look into it, not to create a dangerous street for families when they come to enjoy the street. So that's my concern, so you can look into it. You have more experience in it, so please consider that also in your design.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian.
So on page 13, which is a one-way street option, right? For the garage on Maryland, between Broadway and Wilson, we have two, one entrance and two exits, am I correct?
On that-
For the general public.
I'm sorry, say that, I'm sorry.
For the general public to enter the garage, we have one entrance and two exits.
Are we talking about the south block at Harvard or the one towards Wilson, I'm sorry?
No, no, a north block.
The north block.
On the east side of the street.
Yes.
There are, currently, there are two entrances, two entrances and two exits. The one to the north, the one-way street, it shows that you can enter, you can also exit, right?
Yes.
So if I'm coming from north, I can enter from this one, because it's a one-way street.
Yes.
So when I get to the second, the south entrance, basically, that is there because the valley can go across.
It's for the valley, yes.
So basically, one entrance and two main, one main entrance and two main exits.
Okay, yes, yes.
So let me tell you, this is all, you're not making it very easy, this is very tough decisions to make. But what I like about the plaza option, the south block looks great, you still have that plaza option, you still have that, the recessed areas between the garage entrances that you can have program in different way, have more retail options in that area.
Mm-hmm.
The north side, I like the plaza that we have currently, and my humble request would be to study two things. One is, if you have, because we said we can mix these two options together. So if you have the one-way street option, right now, we have, we come in from Wilson on the west side of the street and enter the garage, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have that only to be an entrance and the south side to be the exit, so a traffic study that tell us, would that support entering from the north side entrance and exiting from south side entrance? If that, that traffic study supports that idea, then on the east side, we can have that concept of a street option as well to connect the entire passeau. You can block the entire east side of the street, the sidewalk and the street, and connect it to the entire plaza that we have right now.
Okay.
That's one option. The other option is, as Mr. Sinanian indicated, because of most of our passeos and the alleys are on access from the west side of the street.
Right.
So if you flip that option and make that west side, right now, there's a one-side, one-way street coming down, the west side lane, to make that a walking pedestrian-friendly area, and the east side lane to be one-way down, one-way south, and then exit, enter the, enter the parking garage. So the drive lane will be flipped as well.
Okay.
So there are two options. So you will have almost a continuous, on the west side, pedestrian-friendly environment all the way to the plaza, and then everything you have on the, to the south of it, it's great. But there are two options I think we need to look at.
Okay.
If the traffic study supports that entering from the north side, north entrance, and exiting from the south entrance only.
Okay.
If that's possible, then we will have that, the option that we connect the passeos on the west side, we have pedestrian-friendly environment, which is the, half the street is included in there as well. So I think that's a great idea that Councilmember Sinanian mentioned, to have that access with the west side of the street. The other, we'll have one more question, but the south side, with the way it's designed, I think it will work really well.
For which team, the plaza scheme or the one-way?
Plaza option.
The plaza option.
And you have a little bit more passive, but it's, it will activate that area tremendously. And that will connect to Exchange, is it Exchange?
Well, I want to make sure we're-
Market Place.
I would connect, I knew, I was just testing my call, I'm just kidding. I would connect to the Marketplace Plaza as well, which is a great thing. That connects a pedestrian-friendly environment from Maryland all the way to Brand, and that's what I think. And people exit from the garages, they come out of this parking garage, they have that beautiful area in front of them. The south side, I have no issues, it's really good, but the north side, I think we need to study these two, two little options.
Okay, I think I heard a lot of, I just want to make sure we, maybe we can circle back, I just want to make sure I heard your comments clearly, because it was-
I think Jennifer's got it down, she was-
And this is on video, this is all on video, so.
Oh, good, okay.
She's got her north and south and all that.
We can replay it, thank you.
And the structure that you have for the arts and entertainment?
Yes. An archway.
The archway.
Gateway, yeah.
The arts and entertainment starts from, from east to west, starts from Brand to Maryland, where does it start?
So right now, and I think that we can be liberal in our definition, at least that's how I've read it, but it actually, the Central Park block, it extends from the Central Park block, it jags to include Mona, and then it goes through Artsakh, and then goes to, back around to Alex Theater.
To Alex, which is California. So main, main arts and entertainment district is on Maryland, basically, that's the main-
Exactly, it is truly the arts district on Artsakh.
So this archway is a great idea, but I think it has to be kind of, has, to have a direct relationship with that, with that street, with Maryland Street. Because if I'm going west on Broadway, I would think, if I don't live in Glendale, I would think I'm entering the arts and entertainment district when I see that sign.
You're saying, put it across Artsakh Street on the north and south.
Pretty much, I mean, I think they would, they would know how to design it to, because when I'm going east or west, I would think that I'm entering the district, which is not that district. So that's just another idea to work on.
We'll study it. This is a plan, you could see that white, the dotted white line is some boundary of the arts and entertainment district. And we actually put it on Broadway, because there is a lot of traffic, they want people to know they're going through that.
Well, I understand the reason behind it, but in another way, just kind of maybe confusing as to where we're going.
Okay.
So I think it has to have some sort of a relationship with main Maryland Avenue, which is the main arts and entertainment district.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Devine.
Okay, not going to take very much time and not going to micromanage, and all I want to say, you know, when I first saw the two plans, I was convinced that I liked the plaza option, because I thought that was our goal, was to have plazas, and the one-way street kind of took the large plazas away, spaces. But then, when, after the briefing and after hearing you today and seeing the flexibility of the one-way street, and it's also more interesting. And I also have to say that I talked to some of the businesses when I was at the event that the city held, and I asked them about the turnaround, and they said that that really hurt business. And so I am in favor of that one-way design, basically for that reason. I'm also happy you are preserving those palm trees, aren't you?
Yes.
In both designs?
Yes.
That's, thank you, I really appreciate that. And that's about all I have to say, I think they're interesting concepts, you have to do the traffic. I can understand, you know, I think a lot of the problem here on Brand that we're talking about, that congestion, is because people can't go left on Wilson, because I have, they're either going into the garage or they're making a turnaround to go, oops, what did I just do? And then it ends up being congestion on Wilson. So that being said, I'll leave those traffic studies up to you, and, but those are my comments favoring that one-way design. Thank you. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Devine. I also see, it's hard to choose between the plaza scheme and the one-way street scheme. I can see the benefits to both of them, so I, I'm not going to put my weight behind any one of them at this point. I can see, we've got nice roadway, but I think, you know, a roadway treatment that would tend to bring slower speeds in any design would be nice, whether it's a cobblestone or some sort of, some other device. The south block, I think deserves more attention than the north block. It is tough. Without, without the extra retail that we envision, I think that's going to be an impossible sell. But if we can bring that extra retail on the east side, I think that'll help things come along. Also, on the, on the west side, just as you cross, as you cross Broadway, it's a very industrial feel. You've got very high walls, you've got a big roll-up utility room with the garbage and stuff like that. I think we've got to really work on that and limit, limit the opening of that big door, and perhaps put some artwork on that when it's closed, because it's really a different feel. North and south are really different at this stage, and so I think we have to focus on that south block to get it equal to the north. I think the potential is there, because south block is going to be closer to everything we were just talking about with the grand, our Central Park features. We've got great restaurants and bars right there. Is Electric Pussycat still in business?
They're doing well.
Is it?
I wondered about that.
Okay. I mean, we've got cute little quirky areas there that will help bolster that southern end, I guess is my point.
Right.
So I, I support everything that we've discussed, I have no issue with what the public input was on this. Before I turn it over and ask for a motion, I do want to ask Mr. Akisaki, you asked to speak, is it on this one or on the business compensation question that we're going to do next?
Well, I'll speak on the compensation side, I just want to say that the project they presented last-
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to let you come up on this one. If the clerk can help fill out a card so we know that you did make comments on this as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Council, especially Paola, Devine, has been a tremendous pleasure to deal with you, and appreciate the opportunity to speak in behalf of this project. Once we met in my place last week on the 31st, I was very pleased to see that the work's going to be done in the alley, because the alley now is a place for really bad people to hang out. So the project that they present, it's something I've seen all over the world in traveling, and it's going to look fantastic, it's going to be excellent addition to the main project you're doing in Artsakh. I appreciate, and that's going to be awesome.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, any, any other council comments? We're giving general direction, and we're not getting into the details. The item is at 1A.
I'll move the, well, I'll move the item. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajianian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes, thank you. Now we're going to go to item two.
Two would be Director of Community Development regarding update on business impact grant for businesses on Artsakh Avenue, two-way motion to note and file report and provide direction to staff.
And thank you to both the SWA and Studio 111 for your presentations, thank you very much. Mr. Lanzarote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, in June of 2018, the City Council elected, voted to change the name of Maryland Avenue to Artsakh Avenue. In conjunction with that, you also created a grant program to help offset, albeit in a limited manner, offset some of the costs of reprinting stationery. With 131 business entities out there, the Council elected to provide a benefit of $1,000 per business. You appropriated $131,000 for that purpose. The program, to apply for the program, the expiration was set for June 15th of 2019, a year later. We are close to that date, we currently have nine or 10, it's just under $10,000 that we have processed, a majority of those have been, have been paid. There was some discussion, we received two letters from businesses on the site, there was some discussion at a recent council meeting as to whether we should amend the program, alter the program to accommodate. These two businesses have said their expenses far exceed $1,000. So we have agendized the item for you, there is approximately $120, $121,000 remaining from the appropriation, and staff is looking for direction from the City Council on whether you wish to alter the terms of the grant program.
Thank you. I do have a card for Mr. Akisaki on this, so let me invite you up to address council on this item, and then we'll go back and discuss.
Again, thank you again for listening to us in this matter. Pam had to leave because she, she thought that this item would be right at the beginning of the agenda, so she left because she had to go back to work. And what we are here, and thank you again, Paola and Ara, for the, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak in behalf of this matter. The amount it was allocated, maybe it would be okay for an office, that you print a business card and a letterhead and some envelopes, but it's very different to a business like a steakhouse, that we have a lot more printed material. So having a different amount dedicated to different business, I think it makes sense, and it's just so far. Another thing I would like to mention, that we have been asked to present receipt for the material we need. So far, Goutros Village has printed what was most important for us, it was, this is the kind of quality material that we use in a steakhouse, it's not like printing an envelope or a business card in a, in a small office. We had to print this because it's the most important item for us, and this alone cost $5,400. We print 20,000 of our items, we have 18,000 members that regularly receive our material. So far, we have printed only the business card, we're talking about all the menu, we're talking about folders that we use to meet our- we're talking about folders that we use to meet our customers, catering and potential customers with the new address. This is a very expensive item, so I'm glad that we have a, a room now to discuss a different amount to enable to take, in order to take care of all this material that needs to be printed. And we're not here asking for you guys to cut us a check, you can take the list of the material that I print, it's an Armenian company who print our material, and see with them, the list of materials, they still have not been printed, because we don't have the funds to go ahead and print it all the material that we have to print, due to the name change that you chose. So we were fine with our material, we have to discharge them, and now we are here asking for justice. We do need to have our material printed, you don't have to, we're not asking here for money for ourselves, you can deal directly with the print company, just need to be done. Our van, our van alone, it will cost $3,800 to rewrap that van, and I'm still driving my van around with the old Maryland. And Council Vartan, I think he, you still like the name Maryland a lot, as much as I do, because throughout the whole, even you refer to Artsakh as Maryland, and...
Well, that was a slip. That was a slip.
I disagree with you, I fought for that name change, like many of us up here, so.
And we don't have any problem with that, we're just seeking justice, being reimbursed for the cost that we have you didn't take in consideration. We have, for example, van, we have backdrop, we have five backdrop that we use in the five major holiday in the US. We have Valentine's, we have Father's Day, Mother's Day, Halloween, Thanksgiving, New Year's Eve. Each one of those backdrops costs $480. We have four of them, one on Maryland, one in the water fountain, one on Brand, and one in our stage. So there is a lot more to just a, a business card and a, and an envelope, and I'd like you to consider that.
Your, your time is up, but let me ask you, how much are you seeking?
I'm seeking...
Did I see like 88,000?
No, but that's the, the entire printing material that we have throughout all the years that we, we now need to have with the name Artsakh. But we, we had to compromise.
So what would you ask us for?
I would like to ask for the, the receipt they already have for, and the things, I don't have the money yet, I need to rewrap my van, I need to print my catering folders, and let's, let's compromise, let's get somewhere in between, based on what we already printed and what we need to, still need to be printed. Because I need the money in order to print the rest of it.
I understand, so what would you be asking us for?
I think I could, we could focus on the, on the main thing, like the, the van, the backdrops, and the, this folder, the rest of this stuff, we are already managing ourselves to do it.
What would that number be? So I'm looking for a number.
Okay, I need to recheck with the print shop and come back with you on that.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, so Mr. Garpet.
The menus that you showed, you said you have 20,000 followers that you send this to? You send this to them? You mail it to them? The 20,000 followers you mentioned you have?
No, we have already 20,000 regular customers in our, in our business. These menus, we print them, 20,000 of each one of our material, because we pay the service people to go and distribute them. Every time we have a promo, we have a, a, a new material coming out, like a postcard for Happy Hour, postcard for karaoke night on Tuesday, comedy on Wednesday, open mic on Thursday. We have a lot of material that we print, and we pay someone to go out on the street and distribute them in the car and the parking.
How long does it take for them to distribute this?
We pay now $100 for every thousand menus, we do like 5,000 items per, in, one week, and if we want to...
So they distribute, so they distribute 5,000 items in one week?
In one week, yes.
Okay, so if you have...
I can bring a witness of the guy who distributed for us.
No, I understand, I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning you, I'm just asking. So that 5,000 pieces can be distributed in one week, right?
Yes.
So if you have 30,000 pieces, it could be in five weeks, or six weeks, or two months, you can distribute this to 30,000 pieces, am I correct or not?
Yes, we usually do 5,000 in one month, we shoot one month and should do that campaign.
Okay, one month, 5,000 in one month.
Mm-hmm.
Fine. So if you have 30,000 pieces, it will be six months, am I correct?
We, we never did more than 20,000 in none of our items.
If it's 20,000, it would be four months.
Yes.
Okay, so from the day that we started talking about this issue, until today, it's over what, two years, two and a half years? And you still have 20,000 pieces that you have to throw away and, and re印? Is that what you're saying?
No, we did throw away the, the things we have with the old address, now we are reprinting with the new address. The point here that you're asking us to put out a lot of money that you didn't count on, you didn't plan on, on having us, asking us if we had or not, and now we have to put out some money we don't have, so we're recreating little by little. This is $5,400, 20,000 on this. You can go to the print shop and ask for the receipt then.
I, I understand that, I, I wanna understand where the, where the cost comes from. If you have 20, if you print 20,000 pieces, it will take you four to six months to distribute them, that's what I'm asking.
You have to print another.
Then you have to print again, reprint again.
Three years.
Once a year, twice a year, whatever that number is, whenever you need it, you print it. So if you had this material from six months ago with all your, you know, your, your old address of Maryland, should have been all distributed by now. So you print, you have to print a new one, all they have to do is change the, the address on, and changing the, that's all I'm asking, I wanna understand it.
But what, we, we failed to...
Is that a question, or?
That was my question, and he answered it, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you for your information, are there any other questions?
But what was the cost, it was for like one month, was that what you were going for?
No.
Uh, sorry.
If you have no question, do you have a question?
Well, yeah, first let's see if there's any other questions, we can let Mr. Akasaki sit down, then we can go back and forth. Okay, I think, thank you, if we have something else, we'll call you up again. Okay, so do you have any other comment, or should I go to Ms. Devine?
No, just a point of clarification, what, what I asked the gentleman was, you had 20,000 pieces, and you have to reprint them, is that, that's what he was saying. And that 20,000 pieces can be distributed in four months, so in last four to six months, they should have been distributed, and the new one that's being printed can have a different address. So he has to reprint them anyways, right? So the address can be changed. And that's all I was asking, to find out what, you know, sometimes I understand, sometimes you go to a restaurant, they change the menu, they have a little sticker on it, and they keep the menu, because it's expensive to change. And they just put a sticker on the menu, and, you know, it doesn't look good, but many of the restaurants do that, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, but...
Well, you go for the food though, not the...
I mean, in other words, it's a recurring expense that the business incurs one way or another. What it says on, on it as far as the address only makes a difference from one, one time to the next, that's it. But at that point, you, you have that recurring expense anyway, so I don't understand why we're being asked to pay for a recurring expense, a business expense, marketing expense.
Ms. Devine, let me go to you, I know you raised this issue.
Well, I, I did, I did, because of the letters that we received, and two things became kind of obvious to me. And first of all, it showed that the, the report from staff showed that the impact of the name change has had minimal actual financial impact on the majority of the businesses in the area, judging from the number of those that have applied for this grant. And although that was a concern of mine, I'm really happy that it hasn't turned into a, a huge financial burden to many. However, the second thing that it showed was that it made it clear that although these two businesses that we're talking about state they have a much greater burden, a financial impact than the $1,000 grant can cover. But therein lies a problem, because it's, it's kind of difficult for us to find a way to fairly come to a, a, a decision on this, a way to, to make this, make this right. And so I wanted to ask staff if they would, could bring back suggestions, and I'm also anxious to hear about, hear from my colleagues as to how they feel that we can deal with this.
I mean, I'll, I'll go.
Yes, Mr. Sinayan.
I, I just don't see what, what we need to deal with, it's a solution looking for a problem, doesn't exist, I haven't seen it. We, you know, I was one of the people who strongly supported the renaming of the two blocks of Maryland to Artsakh, and it is Artsakh Street. And, you know, I didn't have any concerns about the expenses that businesses would incur, because, you know, we, staff had done sort of preliminary math, and they'd said that the minimum, the expense would be minimum. We, those of us that voted for the renaming, supported the $1,000 subsidy towards those businesses, and apparently we were right, and, and everything seems to be quite okay. From what I've heard so far, it's, it's an attempt to have a business fund their marketing effort, and it's just, that's just not fair. So I won't, I don't support it, I don't support that, and I don't think staff should spend any more time on it.
Okay, any other comments or thoughts on this? Any comment? No, no, Mr. Akasaki, you can't address us again, we gave you time. Do you have any comment, Mr. Agajanian?
No.
Before I make my comment? I, I think I, I see the, the point where Mr. Garpetian was going, that many of the expenses are gonna be recurring expenses. As a, and I send there's two businesses, we haven't heard from the other business owner, but I imagine it's the same type of thing. As a matter of, a token of compromise, I'm willing to extend an extra $1,000 to each one of those businesses upon proper proof, but I can't see getting up to the, the levels that, the five-figure levels that they were, that they were, some of them were asking. So I don't know if anyone supports that concept, if it doesn't, then...
Additional $1,000?
Additional $1,000 for each of the two businesses that have...
That's, that's fine, and, and, you know, sorry?
Why is it only the two additional businesses?
Yeah, that's another...
Because that all of a sudden, that creates a, yeah, unfairness to everyone. So now we're telling, we should tell all the businesses, go back, and if the $1,000 wasn't sufficient, come back.
So let me say, it should be up to 2,000. So those that have applied, well, I guess they can apply up to that level. So each business shall have up to $2,000 in reimbursed expenses associated to the renaming of the street.
Upon proof.
Upon, upon the, the regular process of proof that we currently have.
For the time period of?
For the time period of June 14th. Mr. Akasaki, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council.
Mr. Akasaki, please, I understand you're angry, I, I, whoops, look at that, I understand you're angry, please. Mr. Lanzifin.
Mayor, members of City Council, if it is your desire to alter that to $2,000, we would go back to, to the businesses that have already submitted, we will ask them if they have additional claims. Some of them may had, have had costs more than $1,000, that was the limit that we paid at the time. If by June 15th, there are no new claims, I don't think we would need, no, we wouldn't need any new appropriation. If for some reason, they all come in in the last week, we'll come back to you and ask for a new appropriation, if it is your desire to alter the program.
Is that your motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Sinayan?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.